Next item, please.
Item 9D, "Receive Report and Provide Direction to Staff Regarding Short-Term Residential Rentals." We have one speaker card.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. We're here to talk about short-term rentals, STRs, in San Bruno. And if just a short PowerPoint presentation, I'd like to lead you through the staff report to inform the discussion. So first of all, let's talk about a couple of the facts that relate to short-term rentals in the city. So first of all, what is a short-term rental? Well, a short-term rental is a rental of rooms or a home for less than 30 days at a time. And the people who rent the homes are called guests, and the people who rent out the homes are called hosts. So one question might be, well, how many of these are there in the city? And the answer is, there's about 50 unique dwelling units in San Bruno, and those comprise about, as you can see on the slide, about 79 rooms in about 15 houses. So just a caveat before we go any farther, all of the numbers that you're going to see in the staff report and in the presentation are not only preliminary but also subject to daily, if not hourly, change. Our consultant, Muni Services, took a snapshot of what was here in San Bruno as of a particular point in time, and a lot of the information that you'll see in the PowerPoint slides are based on that snapshot. That snapshot can change over time, in fact, pretty significantly, and certainly over months and as the seasons change. So I think it's important that we take all of the numbers in the staff report really with a grain of salt, but we wanted to give you a little bit of the flavor of them so that you know what we're talking about. So those dwelling units that are STRs are spread in, really, throughout the city, and you can see there the average room rate and the average rate for renting an entire house. I'll make another caveat about that. You know, when you look at the list of those room rates and home rates, they really vary widely. I mean, sometimes by several hundred dollars. So it's not clear whether they're picking up all the right numbers or not. So again, this is just an estimate of what we have here in San Bruno right now. All right, so let's take a look for a second and talk about the zoning regulations that apply to short-term rentals. And there's really a couple of them that are relevant. One of them is what's a hotel? And a hotel is a business establishment that has six or more guest rooms. And as you probably know, those are only allowed in C or commercial zoning districts. So you can't have a hotel in a residential district. The zoning code does have a couple of other definitions. One of them is a boarding house, which is kind of an old-fashioned, we're renting out rooms and providing people with breakfast, lunch, and dinner sort of definition. And it turns out that you can have three or more guest rooms lodging in meals, but only in R3 and R4 residential districts, not in R1. So in an R1 district, you can only have up to two rooms that are rented. A rooming house, again, kind of an old-fashioned definition, is where you're not serving people meals, but you're just allowing them to rent a room. So in that situation, you can only get three or more by getting a conditional use permit. Well, what's that? That's a permit issued by the Planning Commission. So you have to go through a Planning Commission process if you want to rent out three or more rooms, and you can only do that in an R3 or R4 district. So for example, you could rent up to two rooms in an R1 district, up to five rooms in an R3 or R4, because remember, six is a hotel, with a conditional use permit. So that sort of gives you an idea of what we have here. And in case you're wondering, we did not correlate any list of properties with what zoning districts they're in, or how many rooms they have, or any of those things. That was, it's too preliminary now to conduct that sort of analysis. So we don't have all of that information, but that's a general overview. All right, let's take a second and look at the current regulations about taxing. So, you know, can we tax short-term rentals, and if so, how? So the city has two taxes that it applies to businesses. One of them is appropriately enough called a business license tax. And that's actually a very small tax rate, as you can see. It's only about .1 percent. And it's really intended to capture the large business establishments in the city. If you make $75,000 a year in gross income, you only owe the city $75. So it's a very small amount of money. On the other hand, transient occupancy tax is the tax that we apply to hotels and motels. And that tax rate is 12 percent, so as you can see, quite a bit larger. So if somebody is earning $75,000 a year running a hotel, they're paying $9,000 in tax to the city. And it's important to note that neither of these taxes are really designed to address or collect revenue from these residential rentals. And you might wonder, well, why is that? Why can't we use these? And the answer is because these aren't really regulatory mechanisms, they're just tax mechanisms. All they're there for is to collect money from people. And so there's no mechanism to track the revenue or to monitor how many rooms people have in their homes, and who's coming and going, and any of those things. The transient occupancy tax, of course, is only applied to hotels. It's not applied under current zoning or under current law to any of the short-term rentals. So that's the reason why these two taxes currently would be difficult to apply to short-term rentals. And we'll talk a little bit about that as we go on. All right, so let's just take a look at a couple of the policy issues that we need to consider. So I've made a list here of some of the things that often come up in discussions about short-term rentals. And at the top of the list is that property owners and individuals who rent these houses indicate that it's supplemental income for them, they can pay the mortgage with the income. And it is important to distinguish that situation from a situation where, on the one hand, it's being used as a primary residence, and they're just renting a room or two out, as opposed to a different situation where some company has bought the house and is doing nothing but operating a commercial business renting rooms out in the home. Those seem to be two different situations. Some of the issues to consider as far as regulation might be that if you have a lot of short-term rentals in the city, which the city does not, there's only 50 out of about 14,000 dwelling units, but if you did have a lot of them, it might reduce long-term housing stock. So those homes aren't available for long-term tenants, for example. There's also a question about whether short-term rentals affect neighborhood character, and I think you probably read in the newspaper about other cities that have had some significant problems with them. San Bruno is fortunate in the sense that we've only gotten a couple of complaints that are uniquely about short-term rentals. On the other hand, there could be parking impacts in particular neighborhoods, and so that's something to keep in mind and one issue to talk about. Another topic is if you are going to regulate, then what's the scope of that regulation, and how much is it going to cost you to enforce that regulation? So there's really a couple of things you can do, and we'll talk about it in just a little more detail in a moment. Some cities have just decided to ban short-term rentals, and you can actually do that if you want to. Some of those cities have been targeted with litigation, but most of them have prevailed eventually. And so the courts have held that cities can ban short-term rentals completely throughout the city if they want to do that. The other alternative is to regulate them with some of the features that we're going to talk about in a minute. One important thing to remember is that the more regulation you impose, the more enforcement it requires, and the more staff resources you need. So you have to be careful about what regulations you're looking at, and allow staff to come back to you with some information about that. The other possibility is you could simply allow short-term rentals to exist without any regulation whatsoever, sort of as we're doing right now. But we're also not collecting any tax revenue from those opportunities either. And speaking of tax revenue, you'll see that if we did collect TOT from about 40 percent of the short-term rentals and had 100 percent collection rate, which frankly is pretty optimistic, you know, you see on the screen that we could be receiving sort of a low six-figure amount. And I guess it's important to pause here for just a minute. Our consultants have told us that under no circumstances should the city budget prospectively for the amount of revenue they think they're going to get from short-term rentals. It's very variable, and it's very difficult to predict. Depending on which model you use, you really don't know in advance how much money you're likely to get. That's really not the case for hotels, because you can predict overall trends in the economy with hotels, but it's very difficult to do that with short-term rental properties. So let's dive a little bit more deeply into what are the regulatory options? What could you do if you wanted to regulate short-term rentals? Well, there's a whole menu of things. So you could regulate the total number in the city. For example, you could decide, we only want 50, we only want 100, we only want 20. So that's one thing you could do. You could also impose those limits by particular zoning districts. So that's something to consider. So some neighborhoods might be able to support more, some neighborhoods maybe could only support fewer. You can look at a minimum distance between short-term rental properties that would require a planning study in order to establish that, so it's not just an arbitrary number. You could look at occupancy caps by number of rooms, by square footage, by lot size. I do want to pause on this for a second, because as attractive as that may seem at first glance, it's actually very difficult to enforce, because those are all things that are transitory within the house, and it's almost impossible for staff to do code enforcement on things that are occurring inside the house that they don't have ready access to or can't see from the public right of way. One thing you could do is you could impose rental periods, and you'll see there's a, you could impose a minimum. You could say, anybody who's renting, you know, one room for fewer than 30 days, you know, doesn't count, we'll just forget about you. On the other hand, you could say that you can only rent a certain number of rooms for a certain number of days throughout the year. So only two rooms, maximum 90 days, for example. So that would be an example of a minimum or a maximum. One fairly common requirement is an owner occupancy requirement. And most cities don't require that the owner actually be present during the rental. What they do instead is require the property owner to come in and present the property tax, the homeowner's exemption, on their property tax to show that that property is their primary residence, as opposed to they're actually living somewhere else and have only, you know, bought the house and are renting it out only to, for a short-term rental. And then finally, you might want to consider what sort of permit process to establish. And a permit process can take two forms. You can certainly have a staff review. Somebody comes in, maybe goes to the clerk's office or the community development counter. For example, San Luis Obispo has an interesting permit process. It's on the website, it tells you what to do. $836 later, you have a permit to operate your short-term rental. Of course, you have to remit the transient occupancy tax as well. The last issue that comes up, though, in terms of permitting, is whether in association with the permit process, you want to have an inspection process. So does the city want to inspect those short-term rentals before they're permitted to make sure that they're safe for the public that decides to stay there overnight, or maybe for several nights? So those are a number of regulatory options, and I've gone into them in a little more detail in the staff report. So here's a couple of things to keep in mind in terms of regulation, and here are some of the challenges. As I think I indicated, yes, cities can legally regulate these, but I think you have to keep a couple of important things in mind. It's first of all, important to remember that you're regulating the land use, not the users. So I guess to put that in a layperson's terms, what that means is that somebody's brother-in-law can be just as bad a tenant as an actual tenant who's unrelated to the family. So what the law says is that you have to regulate the use, not the users. The other thing to consider is that currently, you've got about 50 of these properties in the city, and so if you decide that you want the city to regulate and enforce, then you're adding 50 additional code enforcement properties to the list that have to be monitored and enforced on an ongoing basis. So you may have to, and you certainly will have to allocate additional staff resources to do that, either by staff or by some sort of contract services. One thing that many cities do is, I indicated, San Luis Obispo, for example, is they recover the cost of the administration and enforcement through the permit fee, but it's a fairly steep permit fee, $836. So it's not just a nominal fee. Couple of other challenges to regulate. One thing that a lot of people don't realize is that the online platforms don't actually have to share any information about either the guests or the hosts with anyone, including the city. And that's been confirmed not only by two federal statutes, but by court cases where cities like San Francisco have tried to force the online platforms to give them that information, and they've successfully resisted doing that. And then the last thing to consider is the more you regulate these and the number of rooms, well, the less revenue you might get. So if you say that you can only have, you know, one room or two rooms rented, only 90 days a year, then you're well below that 40 percent threshold that we assumed for the revenue that you might get, and you're certainly not going to collect 100 percent of that revenue. So I think it gives you a little bit of an indication of how difficult it is to predict. So what are the options for collecting revenue? There's really, there's really three of them. And I talked about two of them in the staff report, and then added one when I was doing the PowerPoint, so I wanted to be sure to go over that with you. So the first option is to just simply collect transient occupancy tax, 12 percent, from each individual property owner, and you have about 50 of those individuals. And you can use city staff and contract services to do that. However, it is difficult to verify, because it's very difficult to tell how many people are in the home, when they're there, how many nights they're staying, and what they're doing. And you could certainly require documentation, but you could imagine that's going to become difficult for staff to enforce over time. The second thing you could do is enter into what's called a voluntary collection agreement, a VCA, with Airbnb. And what that is, it's an agreement that Airbnb has offered to some cities, and we haven't talked to them directly about whether they'd be willing to offer it to us, but they've offered it to cities like Redwood City, for example, where every year, or every month, or every quarter, they just send you a check. And the check represents what they believe is the 12 percent of the revenues that were generated in San Bruno. So immediately, you could see that there might be a problem with that, which is the opposite of the problem with going after the property owners, which is verifying that that's actually the amount that's owed. Those agreements do allow the city to audit every four years, but the data that's provided is what's called anonymized or disaggregated, which is a fancy way of saying, they still won't tell you who the hosts and the guests are. But they will provide information regarding what the gross revenues were and how they calculated the amount. But there's still no easy way for the city to verify it. And then finally, there's an interesting option that I've been talking to a couple of land use and taxing attorneys about, which is to amend our ordinance, our TOT ordinance, to require the online platforms to actually collect that revenue and remit it to us, even in the absence of a voluntary collection agreement. And I just found out this morning that Palo Alto has been doing that. I don't know how successful they've been, or whether they eventually defaulted to a voluntary collection agreement or not, but that might be also something to consider. However, in that situation, remember, you still have the audit problems where you can't require the online platforms to tell you who the guests and the hosts are. Well, you can mostly find out about the hosts, because there are services that will do that, but it's still very difficult to verify how many days and nights people are there. So those are three options for collecting revenue. And then finally, there's a couple of things we're requesting direction about tonight. And so the first question is what we asked at the beginning, which is, should the city regulate short-term rentals? If not, then the discussion's over. If so, what type of regulations are you interested in? And depending on what direction you provide, we can come back to you with a lot more information about any or all of those options. There's a lot of information out there. Cities are doing wildly different things. As I mentioned, Redwood City has a voluntary collection agreement. The County of San Mateo decided they didn't want to go that way, they're going to do it on their own. Other cities have hired a consultant to help them. So there's just all kinds of options out there, and no city has picked one particular best practice. And then lastly, the question of should the city collect TOT, transient occupancy tax, from the short-term rental owners? And if the answer to that is yes, then using what mechanism? Going to the property owners directly? Going to Airbnb for a voluntary collection agreement? Or amending the ordinance to require all of them to provide that TOT, but then having to enforce that? So that concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and happy to take any direction, and come back with some additional information.
Okay, speaker cards.
Made it just in time. Let's see here. Alex Melendez, 140 Portola Way. Good evening, City Council and staff. Once again, I'm here as a private citizen representing only myself. I'm here to voice my option on an issue that I consider very important to many in the Bay Area, but also disproportionately affects young individuals. Regarding short-term rentals, I believe the city's consideration of the long-term housing stock should be of great importance. Short-term housing rentals, especially whole home or in-law rentals, can negatively affect housing stock and are not consistent with the goal of increasing affordable housing. Many young adults like myself are often still living at home with their parents or in spaces over-recommended occupancy. Long-term housing stock, as we know, can affect housing prices, and supply is clearly lacking in the Bay Area. However, practically speaking, to outright ban short-term housing rentals both may come off as an infringement on private property rights and discourage local stay and tourism. I believe a good balance for the city of San Bruno would be to cap the number of short-term housing rentals, especially whole-home rentals, and possibly fold existing and future rentals into the city's hotel taxes and rental ordinances where applicable. I thank the City Council and staff for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else? Anybody else from the audience? Comments, thoughts, questions, council? Irene.
Thank you. I have an initial comment. Councilmember Marty Medina and I were part of the revenue, or we were the revenue, or are the revenue, Subcommittee that took the list of revenue generating possibilities and said to staff, oh, this looks like an easy one. So this is just an example of things that look easy and simple and straightforward obviously are not. So we had asked staff to, and city attorney, blank mark, to delve into this, and now it's come back to all of us, and you can see how non-simple it is, and how little revenue, regardless of how it's done, it would generate. So I look forward to hearing everybody else's opinion about this.
So yes, Irene and I were, or are, we are on the Subcommittee.
We're both kind of stunned with it.
Yeah. And really, it was the, you're right, it was one of the easier ones to kind of get off the list, because pretty much everything else, you have to go, due to Prop. 218, you have to go back to the voters to increase taxes. So yes, it's a little complicated, but the way I'm currently looking at it is, right now, it's unregulated. So what's going on? Are those places safe? Who knows? Our next-door neighbor, Millbrae, had some issues, and they're probably a couple steps ahead of us, a couple meetings ahead of us, and figuring out what route to take. I think it would be nice to piggyback along with them and hear what they're doing, and we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Alex, I appreciate your comments that there should be a cap, but it seems like it might be self-regulating, you know, there's about 50, so what would be the cap? But I'm open to hear what everybody thinks about that. So it's unregulated now, and we get absolutely nothing. Well, we could potentially get $200,000. It's going to cost us some money to get that. It was a snapshot. Probably the prices go up during the holidays, and so I'm in favor of going along, and I'm not sure exactly what model is going to work best. If we amend an ordinance to require all TOT, that doesn't prohibit Airbnb to still pretty much, it's kind of the same thing. They're going to go ahead and give it to us anyhow, they're not going to require the property owner to do it. I think that would be a lot more difficult to try to do, but however that works out, of making it more automatic and having contract staff, I'm interested in seeing how other cities are going to do it. Instead of trying to reinvent the wheel, I know our code enforcement department has plenty of things to already take care of. But right now, we have things that are unregulated. Is it safe for people to be in those houses? Is the setback where their fence line, their property line, next to somebody else? Who are these people that are next door? I don't live next to one, but if, I think there might be one around the corner, because I see a lot of different cars coming in and out. I suppose I could get on Airbnb and find out where they're at, and just pretend you're interested in renting the space, and they're going to tell you where to go. So those are kind of my thoughts for now. I think we need to regulate. I think we could definitely use the 100, we could use $100,000, even if it's half of that. So those are my comments.
Mark, the numbers that were in the report, where did we gather the information about how many units? Is that just looking at Airbnb or one particular platform?
No. So Muni Services, who is our, generally we use for sales tax consulting, also is in the business of figuring out and helping cities to determine what online short-term rentals they have. And so the listings they looked at were not just Airbnb, they were across a wide variety of online platforms, the most popular ones that you've probably heard of. As it turns out, I think most, all, if not all, of the listings in San Bruno were listed on at least Airbnb in addition to some of the other sites. So generally, people list, it appears, on more than one site, but it appears they, almost all of them, list on Airbnb.
And could people potentially go on Craigslist or on Nextdoor and advertise your properties there?
That's possible, I suppose. I don't think they looked at Nextdoor, and they, I don't, I don't think they looked at Craigslist.
Okay. Because I like the idea of having the TOT collected by the online platform, but I'm wondering how many, how many of those sites we would capture by going that way, or if people would find another way to advertise your property to sort of skirt around it. So I'm wondering how effective it could be.
That's a good question. One of the things that I, we had thought of when we were talking about this at staff is depending on the direction we get from you, to then make some additional inquiries from cities that use that approach and find out what their compliance rate is, because I'm sure they can test retrospectively to go back and see, did we get all the money that we thought we were going to get? And if not, why not? And if so, well, it's working well, so.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it seems to me that the sharing economy is here to stay, and so we should find a way to embrace it, regulate it if possible, hopefully without causing too much additional work for staff. I know we've got an item coming up about enhancements, and it's already pretty obvious that it, you know, we're kind of spread thin already, so I don't want to create a situation where we're trying to chase down things that may or may not pan out, but it does, it does look like there is potential there, and so I would be interested in seeing more details around how we can regulate it.
Comments, Laura?
Yes, I just, I think I echo House Member's comments. I'm concerned about staff time, I'm concerned about spending money, to get money. First, the bigger picture is also housing. In a, what's the word for it? Not enough is going around. More jobs in the area than there are housing. We do know, we do know we have an issue with that. If someone spends money on something that, in time and effort, we're really not going to recruit. However, I'm also interested in seeing what other cities are doing. So I echo House Member Medina's comments regarding the city is not right. I'm also interested in hearing more about what City of Palo Alto is doing.
Thank you. Irene, did you want to circle back?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to circle back?
Oh, yes. I have a couple of comments. I appreciate the member of the audience who spoke about housing issues, and I know I appreciate the member of the audience who spoke about housing issues, and I know we are very concerned about parking in certain areas. So I, too, would like us to look at a cap. I don't, if we cap at fifty, are the people who are already listed, that would be it? Is it like grandfathered in? Or is there some kind of time period where you, I don't know? Or if we cap at a hundred, or how would that work? Or would you have to go look it up?
Unfortunately, it's a little more complicated than that.
Of course it is.
And the reason for that is because of the individuals who are currently renting their houses out, it's not clear that all of them are compliant with our zoning codes right now. So you would want to set up a permit system to have people come in on a first-come, first-served basis to request a permit and then put in place whatever inspection or other regulatory mechanism you have to determine if they're complying, both with the zoning code, certainly with the zoning code in terms of number of rooms they're renting out, and then also with building codes. So the difficulty is that just because there's fifty now, doesn't mean there's going to be either fewer than fifty or more than fifty when you put your permit program in place.
Okay, good point. So I think we are hearing from everybody, well, you have your choice, too. You have your chance. But I, too, would like to hear about other cities and what they've done and what has been successful and what hasn't been. And obviously, we wouldn't do that. I'd like us to look at a cap. And I would also like us to look at parking. We have some very narrow streets. We have some areas that houses don't even have garages. I would, and we are already hearing from people about strong parking enforcement issues. So I would think we would not allow Airbnbs in those areas, or I guess it's short-term rentals instead of Airbnbs in those areas. I agree about permitting, having some kind of permits and making sure that the places are safe. I'd also like to hear more about, what do you do when somebody advertises, they don't have a permit, they're not part of the system that we have? What is the recourse with that? What do we do with those?
So that would be covered under the normal part of code enforcement. So it would be the same as individual property owner, either building without a permit or having some use of their property without a permit that's required. So I think that the, going back and looking at, as you and some of the others have suggested, to look at different zoning districts, and some areas might support more, some might support fewer, might suggest that rather than having a citywide cap of a certain number, that you actually might want to look at certain neighborhoods. And unfortunately, that's going to require a lot more work on a staff basis because then you have to look at individual areas and zoning districts. So while we could do, we could certainly come back with a total cap for the entire city, one question is whether you want to look at specific neighborhoods, because these rentals are spread out all over the place. And it's clear from looking, from talking to our consultant, that some of those areas might be impacted for parking and other reasons, and others may not be.
Mark, I was thinking back to 2015, when we decided that we didn't want to let people rent out their driveways. Is this similar to that in that, I think back then, you said something about, basically, if they rent their driveways, it's a commercial use of their property and it shouldn't be allowed. Why can you rent a room and not fall into the same category as renting your driveway? Is that different? And are we still banning, are we still not allowing driveway sharing?
So there's no clear way for the city, other than using code enforcement, to follow up on that. And the city did engage in code enforcement, as you may recall, back then with some of the online platforms. And with, I would say, varying and sporadic degree of success, I think we were able to get a couple of those to discontinue their uses, but it's certainly possible that there's many other uses that we're not aware of. As you know, code enforcement is on a complaint-driven basis, and our code enforcement officers don't go out and look for cars that are parked in people's driveways to try to determine if they're parking there for the airport or for some other reason. So it's very difficult to do that. As far as the commercial use of their property, that is true. However, with the short-term rentals, there's no obvious difference between that and simply having a rental house for a long-term basis. It's still a business for the property owner. The difference is that in the short-term rental case, there might be more turnover of individuals at the house. That may or may not create more neighborhood impacts and may or may not affect the residential character of those neighborhoods.
Okay. Thank you.
I think what I'm hearing, and I have some concurrences, looking at a cap, what other cities are doing, parking in certain areas for short-term, because I think bringing that to impacted areas is not something we want to do, regardless to revenue, because honestly, more parking is now another problem, that we have to then deal with that on the other end. Permits or some type of business license for the homeowner or the person that's doing the renting, maybe they have to pay some type of a business license and have to come in, then it has to be inspected. Just trying to think of other ways to ensure that we're getting it. And that may be the business license, you must have that in order to, I don't know how you would enforce that, to advertise. Business license equals the ability to advertise, which is the business, you're collecting money, you're operating and such. So just like anybody else who operates a business in the community or lives outside the community that comes in, you need a business license. So maybe that's something else we should look into. Also, as far as what happens, how much time is it going to take? So if we're projecting a hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars, let's just say it's two-hundred, and it's going to take us a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand to do enforcement, do staff time, et cetera, et cetera, inspections, then is that worth the outcome? So what is my return on investment? And so if in the end, we're fifty thousand dollars in the positive, is all that worth the staff time? But the question was about hiring a consultant. So what are those true costs? And what's the projected for those that have done it? How much time that will take? And I think that is the element I always like to hear is, okay, you can throw two-hundred thousand, and we go, well, now we can do something. Well, really, it's not a for sure, just like the TOT tax is not for sure every year what we're going to get, or the sales taxes we know. So I think those are at least my comments on the things that I would like to have looked at. Hopefully, I've recapped most of what the council has said. Laura, did I recap most of what your thoughts were said?
Yes, thank you.
Does that give staff enough direction?
I believe so. I think the information that you're requesting come back is likely going to require the further assistance of our outside consultants, because there, you know, we've heard, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. Unfortunately, there are about two or three wheels out there that different cities are using. And so I think in order to get the information that you're looking for, we'll probably need to look at what a wide variety of cities are actually doing, and if we can get data about how effective it is. So we'll definitely come back to you as soon as we can with some additional information that you've requested and put together a program that we think makes sense based on the direction that we've given you, that you've given us, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up and bringing that forward.